...twenty-fifth, the Gulf Hughes Rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to call up Pastor Kevin Grease, please through our invocation. Thank you, Kevin.
Pastor. Hello? That work? Yeah? One second. Hello? Do you push it? No, but you're... Hello? Here we are. Here we are, Lord. Let's pray for them, shall we? Father God, we stop right now and humble ourselves, Lord, to humbly remind ourselves that you alone are God. And we stop now to humble ourselves because your word promises that you lift up and you help those who are humble, but you oppose the proud. So, Lord, I pray you would help us, Lord, to put away prideful thoughts or actions in our own hearts, and, Lord, may we think of our neighbor and love them as ourselves, as your word tells us to. But I pray for these leaders in this circle, Lord, I pray for the leaders that are out in our community now, the fire, police, emergency personnel, I pray for all of them. You would give them all wisdom that comes from you, they would look to you for their wisdom and guidance. I also pray for protection, Lord, protection and blessing upon their families. Lord God, I pray also for our community, that you would help us as a community, Lord, to be mindful of our neighbors, Lord, that we reach across our property lines and truly love our neighbor as ourselves, Lord, that you would give us ears to hear, to understand each other, to listen and to grow as a community. Lord, we just thank you for all your many blessings to us as a community. As you look around, even the fact that we have these microphones to talk into, the technology all around us, Lord, we're so blessed in this country and in this community. And, Lord, I pray that you would just help us to be mindful that with all the blessings that we have, not to forget to look back and see who they all come from, the father of lights who blesses us with so many good things. And so, Lord, we just ask that your presence would guide us and guide these men and women as they make decisions to better our community, that we might be a shining light for you. We pray this in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you very much. At this time, before I ask, we will call, just want to mention that our clerk has had a new baby, she's recovering at home, so she won't be here at this meeting, we hope she maybe will get the next one, so at this time, ask Michelle if you could...
Lou? Lou? Oh, yes. Gray?
Yes.
Alston?
Present.
Horn?
Here.
Rizek?
Vincent?
Here.
Okay, we'll go to open to the public, agenda items only, if you have anything you'd like to say prior to the meeting, please step forward. Oh, there's so many of you there, you might as well take a number. We'll move on to the consent agenda. You all have had an agenda there, and I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda. How made that motion?
Second.
Motion, second, roll call, please.
Gray?
Yes.
Alston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Clerk's report, Michelle, anything? No, nothing? Okay, move to my report. I have nothing right at this meeting, maybe some comments later on. Move on to administrator's report, Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Mayor. If you refer to your board packet item H1, this is the village hall roof bids. If you recall, the board authorized us on July 26th to draw up the bids for replacement on this roof, and attached are the bid amounts, and those amounts are careless roofing at forty-six thousand oh twenty-four, RB Crowder at sixty-two thousand nine hundred fifty dollars, total roofing and construction services at twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, and Superintendent Griselle has vetted each of those bids and found all to be in order, and we're requesting motion to accept the bid from Total Roofing and Construction Services in the amount of twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
Motion, please?
I'll make that a motion.
Second, I can't, Lou. Question, discussion?
Yes, is this intended to be done before weather?
It would be if weather permits, yes.
And what's the warranty of this?
Warranty is twenty years, and it is a manufacturer warranty, not a roofing company warranty. It's straight from the manufacturer.
So, any defect in installation is not covered?
No, any defect in installation is covered by the manufacturer. The installers have to be certified by the manufacturer in order to install this type of roofing.
David Griselle, I don't mean to put you on the spot, I really don't, but do you have any information on this roof? We're seeing he's so much lower, do we know his past practices, that he does very good work or whatever?
Yes.
Yes, huh? He's been checked out. Very good.
Question is, when would they start? When would they start working?
Again, that would be weather dependent, they would have to look for a break in the weather that would give them the best opportunity to tear off and complete, so if they could start upon notification of them receiving a bid, if they could start tomorrow, they most likely would, but obviously that isn't going to happen. They could start as early as next week, it just depends on the weather. Part of that bid process was, or the bid form was, to make them aware that this building is occupied every day and no work interruption of work can take place, and that they need to weather all that in, show them what to be here. We fully expect to be able to have it done yet this year.
Thank you, Gina.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Alston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, H2, has to do with demolition of, and I need to validate this address, fifty-five fifty-seven Wilson, fifty-five thirty-seven Wilson, which is a single-family home that the village purchased during the acquisition of property for stormwater retention that had to do with the Egyptian Trail Road construction. The single-family home is in dilapidated disrepair, and we have gone out and saw two quotes, you have those quotes in front of you, one from Advance Enterprises out of Mopina for eleven thousand two hundred, and the other from Express Contracting out of Mantino, Illinois for twelve thousand forty-seven dollars. Both quotes have been reviewed by Superintendent Griselle and were found to be in order, and we're asking there for it to recommend acceptance of the bid from Advance Enterprises in the amount of eleven thousand two hundred dollars.
Can I motion, please, to approve this?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Any discussion?
I just want to say I'm glad we got the correct address. This is the home, if you were heading to Egyptian Trail from Court Street, would you begin to turn to go north? It would be the home, right on your right side there, on the west side of the street.
Any other discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Horn?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Alston?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Item H3 on the agenda has to do with the purchase of a two thousand eighteen International seventy-four hundred dump and plow truck for the Department of Public Works. This truck purchase is a budgeted item, it has gone through committee at the last Public Works Committee meeting, and is being purchased on state bid, authorization under state bid. This vehicle will replace a nineteen ninety-nine model International plow truck, which will remain in the fleet but will be repurposed to a lesser duty cycle to avoid repair costs that were associated with that vehicle. The contract price of this vehicle is one hundred fifty-nine thousand four hundred twenty-nine dollars, and again, this is a budgeted item, and we're asking permission for purchase.
Can I motion, please?
So, Lou? Second question.
Motion, second discussion, yes. Are we leasing this? No, sir, this is a purchase. Yes, sir. Any other discussion?
I have a question for trustee Alston. At the last meeting, when we approved purchase of the chassis cab contract, you stated that you would wish it went to finance first. Are you aware of this purchase?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Vincent?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Alston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Moving on, item H4 is permission to go up the bid. The village is requesting that have the Linden Group prepare bid documents for roof replacement on the Public Works facility located on Industrial Drive. Linden Group, if you recall, was the group that was employed to prepare engineering plans and engineering for the entire facility, and therefore is best suited, because they already have that information regarding the roof, to prepare the bid documents. The work of this nature is, of this facility, has been an item that is budgeted in this fiscal budget, and we're asking permission to authorize the Linden Group to prepare the documents and go up the bid.
I would like to table this.
Motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
Reason for tabling, not been discussed in finance in terms of the current roof, and I think we need to look at the total outlay of what's going on with that building before we spend any more money on it.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Lou?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Alston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Thank you. Item H5 is our computer, our final computer hardware and software purchase, which will complete the municipal-wide upgrade on our, from servers to infrastructure to software to desktop PCs throughout the entire village. If you will please note that I have provided you an updated sheet with pricing that reflects the proper price for cloud security throughout the village. That was unavailable, or was incorrectly stated on the previous sheet that I handed out. So, the new amount that we are seeking permission to purchase is in the amount of thirty-one thousand one hundred forty-two dollars fifty-six cents. What that entails basically is proper software licensing for forty-two users, security hardware, which brings security to the proper level for all operations of the municipality, thirteen PCs, nine monitors, and please note that we did use four different vendors to obtain the best pricing possible on that. I would also like to request that, should you so consider to approve this, that this is a waive to bid, waiver to bid first, and accept this process or this number second.
How made that motion? Second discussion? The attitude, okay, discussion?
This actually is a question directed towards our chief. Chief, how many of these are actually fine service in your department? Can you answer that?
I'm not sure which that sheet that is or where it's at, and I can't answer that right now.
I believe there are seven PCs slated for a police department.
Okay. We're going to find to the village attorney if we could that the waiver process is correct here.
Yes, sir, what we would do is waive, first motion would be waive the bid process, the formal bid process, and if that passes, then the board has the authority to, and then to be proposed bid by the defendant. But you would have the bid process first.
So, we have two motions, the first one then seems to be amended, or just probably do that?
The first motion would be motion to waive formal bid process, at that point, if it does pass, then the motion to approve that proposal. And since the administrator already received four proposals, I think we're very, on very good grounds.
I have another question, the cloud security component of this document, is that for, is that for primarily police, or would it be for all the PCs in the, or networks rather in the village?
That is municipal-wide. And the reason, a good reason that we need that, a main reason, is because much of our information will be accessed from in the field. And if you recall, we are upgrading to GIS and things of that nature, which will be very helpful for Public Works out in the field, so that's the big security breach potential, and so it is municipal-wide.
And that cloud security is going to be an annual expense?
It is.
Do we have any guarantee or limitation on how much that will go up, or do we have the ability to change it to a different vendor?
We always have the ability to change to a different vendor, we could re-license with someone else, and this was the least expensive route for, to obtain the level of security that our professionals thought necessary at this point.
And Cisco is who you're recommending?
Actually, it, give me one second. It is not the Cisco cloud that is being recommended at this point. And I'm sorry, I don't have the name of the, of the other vendor. And it's strictly a pricing issue. This pricing turned out better, kind of a security issue, than the Cisco did. But what you see in there is a Cisco, a security appliance, that is another, that is a difference, because this quote here consists of software and hardware, and so the Cisco portion there is the hardware, the cloud security is a software product.
Okay, any other discussion, then? There was a motion on the first?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Gray?
Yes.
Alston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Any motion on the second one there?
I'll make motion on the second one.
Okay, second. Motion and second, any other discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Alston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and on behalf of the staff, we just had a staff meeting, I can say that everyone is very much looking forward to the end result of the installation of all this new equipment and the abilities it brings with it, so on behalf of the staff within the neighborhood, the efforts here.
David, before you on, I just wanted to say that all this has to do with streamlining, saving hours, and work, and problems we have with the old system. It has made a dramatic change in our police department, which the chief can concur on that, and we were light-years away from where we should be on our system, which cost a lot of hours there, so this is a very cost-saving program we've come up with. Thank you. Go ahead, David.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe the last item on my agenda is item H6, and that is an Amazon contract for labor. And basically what that is, is Amazon has approached the police chief in an effort to secure additional personnel for traffic control on specific days and times, and so Attorney Gorcheski has drawn up a contract, it has been approved by Amazon, and now it is before this board for your approval. It provides for the cost of a personnel along with the vehicle, and all the discretion of operations remains with the police chief, and all employees remain employees of the village, and they work for the municipality, and at no time do they work for Amazon, so we're totally in control. We would ask that the board would motion to approve the contract, allowing police and EMA personnel to provide the additional services requested to Amazon, and authorize the signing of this contract.
Can I motion, please?
So, Lou?
Second.
I'll second that.
Second.
I do have a question.
Sure, discussion.
Administrator Wallace, how will, will our officers and EMA personnel be covered by our insurance in the same way if they're on the Amazon side and somewhere else?
Because they remain employees of the municipality, they are covered under our insurance.
Are EMA personnel normally covered under our insurance anyway?
Yes, they are.
So, there's no additional cost?
There is none.
When you, when you talk about the vehicle, are they buying the vehicle to the person?
No, it's an hourly charge that we are charging Amazon, and it includes one person and one vehicle.
And that was, the amount that they're showing here is covering that?
That is correct, yes. And those amounts were, we backed into those amounts with the finance department to include roll-up costs, benefits, costs, and insurance costs as well.
Yeah, this is absolutely no cost to the village whatsoever, but the chief has complete control, so it's as if we were expanding our area without a cost list.
I have a question for the chief, and actually for Mr. Simpson, who was there at DJ Door and Bala EMA. Basically, gentlemen, how, what are we looking at as far as manpower in days that Amazon is asking us to be out there? Any one of you three would like to answer that? How many bodies, I know the shift changes are, I believe, six in the morning, six at night, how many bodies are they looking for? Obviously, in light of what happened earlier this week, I do come home at night that time, I know what goes on out there as far as it's, a lot of people come and go. So, how many, how many bodies are we looking at trying to be out there to control everything?
I'm beginning, right now, would be four bodies for each shift, one being their start shift at 5:00 AM, and one being their second roll of shifts at 5:00 PM, it would be two to four-hour increments.
Okay.
It is strictly at this time for traffic control on Moni Manhattan Road, it would not be on the Amazon property, it would actually be on the highway.
Okay.
There is, if I might add, there is work being done with engineers and DOT to help with the synchronization of lights, and to help with moving the traffic out. Amazon has a private company coming in to help with clearing the parking lot and bringing people in to make that a more smooth transition, and we have also had contact with the sheriff's office to supplement us in the event that we cannot maintain or offer this coverage, because our priority is, number one, to staff our shifts and be available for the citizens around here.
I have one other question. So, how, how long do you think this is going to go on for? Is it indefinitely, or are we going to look at employing more police officers?
I'm all for the employ more police officers part, if you want to make that motion, trustee Lou. This is, currently, this is being targeted for middle of November through Christmas.
Okay.
That will be the time which Amazon hires their temp services to handle the holiday traffic.
So, a seasonal cover, a seasonal coverage?
At this point, I think they'll be looking to see how that evolves and how things work out as we move along.
Okay, thank you.
We're not required to use police, are we? I mean, can you use police cadets, can you use employees that are hired otherwise? Well, if you wanted to, you know, say you had community service officers or something of that nature, as long as they had the proper training, and the liability was covered on that end, and they were supervised by the police department, I think that, yes, we could do that. I would not put cadets out there. So, it would have to be another form of village employee at this point. So, my concern is that right now, we have enough people complaining that we don't have coverage in the village itself, this is going to take away from that and put people over there, and if we don't hire extra people, which I am hearing, we're not going to hire extra people, we already have excessive overtime at the village in that department. Forget whether the cost is covered by Amazon, how in the world are officers who are already working too much overtime going to get enough rest to be able to do their jobs properly, and how are we going to assure that we have coverage in the rest of the village? That's why I've been meeting with the sheriff's department, and they will be a very large part of this. As I said earlier, I will not jeopardize our shift and our coverage for the village, and the sheriff's department will be a large partner in this, and may probably be the larger partner because of their ability to supply resources that we don't have.
If I may additionally state it, or ask stated in the contract, the sole discretion of whether or not we can supply officers is always left up to the police chief. Basically, the framework in which this would work is Amazon would request, the chief would see what can be fulfilled, and that is what is given to them. There is not a guarantee on the municipality's part to provide that, and there is not a hindrance on our, we would not be suffering a hindrance as a mandate from Amazon, it's sole discretion with the police chief, with all things considered.
I have another question. If the sheriff's police is going to be doing this with us, do they have a separate contract, or are they going to be doing it on us? Do they have a separate contract?
They would be separate, yes, ma'am.
All right. And do we have anything that states that EMA actually gets insurance fees, that they're covered on the hour, which they, I wouldn't want anything to get until EMA person, and then we don't have anything written that they are covered under an insurance.
Right, we do have coverage under our SWARM, which is our insurance coverage for all employees and vehicles and things of that nature, as well as they are workers, so in on-the-job type thing is a workers' comp issue, we certainly have plenty of coverage for that, so at the end, if you answer a short answer, it would be yes, we do.
And I want to make a comment, that I don't want the public to think that our officers are overworked and tired, they're not. The chief makes sure that the hours are commensable with the officers, that nobody is overworked, and we're not going to allow that to happen either with this. I don't feel that we're not taking care of Moni, that's number one. That's number one.
And if I might add, Mayor, there are contractual obligations by the village as far as mandated number of hours an officer is allowed to work, and the amount of hours of rest before he can be utilized on another shift. We have contractual obligations in place to protect that same issue.
Very good. Any other discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Horn?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Alston?
No.
Thank you, and that concludes my report.
And move on to officials' report. Your work.
I'm sorry, but I, the reports are, the reports.
If I might, I'm sorry for interrupting. I do have one additional thing. If, to everyone who's, who pays attention to this, you may have heard that earlier in some meetings, we talked about Aqua has applied for an increase in their rates for sanitary service as it applies to the village of Moni, but also to their other customers that have both sanitary and water service. I would like to, that everyone to know that tomorrow, we will place a couple of links up on our website, villageofmoni.org. We will have a couple of links up on our website that will allow you to link to the Commerce Commission area, and we would encourage you to understand a little bit what's going on, log a, a comment either for or against that, so that it becomes a matter of record. And it's, it's, we'd like to get that push done, preferably by the end of the month, so that we, we just make our statement there. It's a significantly large increase. I believe it's in the neighborhood of seventy percent, if I'm not mistaken, and we just wanted to offer the opportunity to, to hit those links and log your, your comments on that. So any help from the public would certainly be appreciated. Thank you, Mayor.
Move on to Parks and Parks. Vincent?
Thank you. October 27th, which is Friday, will be showing the movie Frankenweenie at the Park Department. It's at six o'clock. The cost is $3 and includes a snack and a juice box. And then this Saturday is Halloween Happenings from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. The event is free, and we hope everybody comes with a trick-or-tomb, a costume contest. And then if you can mark your calendars for Saturday, December 2nd, which is not too far away, will be our annual Christmas tree lighting at 6:30, which starts off at the road hall and then goes across the street to the school for cookies and juice and music. And now I would like to refer to Chad Simpson for just a few minutes to tell us about him ever, he won the Super Bowl.
Our lightweight and JV team are going to the Super Bowl this Saturday. They'll be down in Bradley at 2:11, South Washington, Avenue Bradley. I invite you guys all to come out to that. We will be caravan out of town, leave about 9:30 to head down to Bradley for the Super Bowl. I also would like to mention that our cheerleaders on October 15th, our lightweight, JV, and varsity, all took third at their cheer competition for the Ivy League, and I hope to see you guys all up there.
Thank you very much. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
I see another line.
Okay, we'll move on to Finance, trustee Olson.
Just a couple of quick things. We met this last Monday. We will have treasurer's report by this Friday, and we'll be putting the debt paper by October Remind you to the trustees that the levy for next year must be approved by the last Tuesday of December, so we need to keep that in mind in looking at our calendar of business activities. The audit final draft is due by the end of this week, and once that has been received, we will make sure all the trustees have a copy of that, and I would assume we will publish that as well. Seventy-five pages or so, so we won't be able to print a lot of copies, but, and the Finance Committee will review that further. The TIF report is almost finalized and should be available, again, I think, by the end of the month. By the end of the month, thank you, Darrell. We also put together a schedule, or are putting together a schedule for budgeting next year. We give Jack to have the budget done by the end of next year, by the board, so that it would be in effect at the same time that the new year starts. And we are putting together a scheduled meeting for that, starting in January and February, the committee meetings. I think the staff is going to be looking at it in January, and then the Finance Committee in February, March, so that by mid-March, the full board will be able to start looking at the budget. Additionally, the Finance Committee will meet on February, excuse me, November 13th next month, and we're to put together a more review of the treasurer's report and the audit report, and looking at this year's budget and where we are on this budget. That will be a four o'clock meeting, probably will end up being a two-hour meeting. End of report.
Okay, we'll move on to Economic Development, trustee Lou.
Very, very busy behind the scenes, but no report today.
Thank you, David. Building Services, trustee Horn.
Okay, we have a couple homes under construction, one by the builder of Sheamus and builder Delaney. They're both doing homes in the Moni Fairgrounds area. Those homes are going up now, and they're under roof. Barucci completed one unit, is underway completing another. What is that, Michael, what is that subdivision that he's in?
You talking about Derby Lane?
Derby Lane, thank you. So that, that's a, is that a two-unit?
That was a four-unit.
A four-unit, okay, thank you. There's new construction at 6924 Trisha Court. Reviews completed and permit issued last week. Paul Sheets, chiropractor, his building on Governor's Highway, I'm sure you've seen it, is the exterior permit was picked up and is moving along. Now, across the street from Sheets is May's Barbecue and Moni Liquor. Their plans and applications have been submitted, and reviews were issued back to their general contractor. Permits should be picked up this week. Now, there are thirty-three new permits that have been issued thus far this month. That is for all different projects, whether home improvement and so forth, and sixteen rental resale inspections have been opened. And then at 5152 Fairgrounds, there was a house fire, I believe that was on Labor Day. They've sent initial plans and applications to begin repairs. We're waiting for the plan set before we can issue. And then there was a meeting with American Homes, which is a big rental company in town that occurred on October 24th. That was, that meeting was to discuss their properties, including, there was one that was mentioned at this last board meeting. Some of you may remember that. That address on that house was 5139 Fairgrounds Court. That location has been ticketed two times by door tags, and we receive tickets from here forward. So we are quite aware of the situation with that property. End of report.
Question? Trustee, one, the sixteen, that's sixteen rental slash resale, is either one or the other?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. That was quite a thorough report there. Public Safety, chief, is there anything you'd like to say?
Just a couple of short things. The Police and Fire Commission will conduct the written examination for sergeant on December 9th. Our reviews will be scheduled in early January. There are nine officers eligible to take the sergeant's exam at this time. Also, in light of the fatal traffic crash on the Amazon property yesterday, Amazon is looking to beef up their security internally and move some of it out to the controlled parking lot during their peak hours, where traffic is extremely heavy.
Thank you, chief. We'll move on to Attorney's Report.
Thank you, ma'am. I got two items for board consideration. The first item is an ordinance approving the purchase of real estate that we've talked about on previous occasions. The purchase price would be $185,000. We do have thirty days of due diligence. It was anticipated that the due diligence comes back fairly, that we could close by, hopefully, the end of this year. But the board calls it was approved, Matty, we see $200,000, and we agreed to 185. So it's up tonight for the board to give consideration.
Any discussion? If not, can I have a motion approved? Make the motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Vincent?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Alston?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
That's ordinance number 1816.
That's 1815?
Sixty.
Sixty.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item is an ordinance resolving, basically TIP number two. It was established in 1994 through the works of trustee, I'm sorry, Darrell Ballinger, myself, Mr. Wallace, and our bottom counsel. It's been determined that an ordinance has to be filed and obviously adopted, filed with the county by the end of next week. This will terminate at TIP, which is TIP number two. And this will then, we'll have TIP number five established, but by law, this ordinance has to be on file by the end of next week. Let's make that motion.
Second? Second. Discussion, anyone want to discuss? If not, roll call, please.
Lou?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Alston?
Chris.
Warren?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
It's ordinance number 1817.
Okay, under Old Business, we need a motion to take off the table. It was tabled before, court lease, so I need a motion to remove the table.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, so Building Committee met on this to discuss this issue, and the Finance Committee, I believe, met to discuss this issue, at least was part of their meeting, last, earlier in the week, and I, both committees, I believe, came up with a, a negative agreement for this, to not pursue this court lease. I am, I believe, David, is that the case with your committee, Mike, accurate on that?
Yeah, the Finance Committee has recommended it's not be accepted. However, we have two options that could be looked at if the administration is interested. One is that the Will County Sheriff's Department provide their own security rather than use our police department. And number two is that the park building be used instead of the village hall. We feel like it's probably more suited for the ADA requirements and other requirements than this building. And I recommend that we do it, we're just saying those would be two options if there's some interest.
I think we're, we're getting a little ahead of ourselves, so all we want to do right now is, is take it off table so we can discuss it. So, I had a motion in a second to do that. We can discuss this on the next motion. Roll call, please.
Gray?
Yes.
Alston?
Chris.
Warren?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Okay, now, now we can discuss a motion to resolve the court lease agreement, if you wish to have one.
Can we discuss without making a motion?
You, you can discuss, but I don't think any final action is taken tonight.
Perfect.
Discuss it tonight.
Okay, so what I'd like to suggest is that we do exactly that.
That's a concern.
As I mentioned, the Finance Committee did meet, we did talk about it. We, at this time, are not recommending it. We're open to a discussion down the road, but we think it's financially not feasible, looking at from a financial point of view. To make it more financially feasible would be two things. One is usable to the sheriffs, and two would be to look at using the park building. Now, the, all fairness, DJ was not at this meeting, so there may be some things about that building we don't know, but based on our limited information, it would appear that that's more suitable than this building is. But at any rate, we don't think under the present contract that this is feasible.
And I will say, from the Building Committee side of things, we came to that same conclusion. To use this building would require some infrastructure improvements and which, which I don't believe they're offering paid for. Now, if they want, if you wanted to go to them and try to renegotiate and get, I don't know, a certain number of dollars to make the improvements that need to be made, I think it'd still be cheaper for the county than building a new courthouse on the side of the county, so we live that.
The only comment that I have, I think that if we do it in the park building, I think that we're cheating the parking rep department, and we're cheating the residents of the village. The park building is for park and recreation, it's not to make money as a court person. I think we can fill it with programs in that, in that court.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll go to New Business.
I have one other, Old Business, I might mention that. The crime-free rental housing ordinance, the Review Committee has met, and we are discussing, there are public meetings, we are discussing what's going on with that. The next one will be on Monday, November 6th, at 4:00 p.m. We will, of course, post that publicly, but anyone is welcome.
What time would that be?
Four o'clock.
Okay. Any other Old Business? Thank you, Daniel. If not, we'll move on to New Business. Honey, New Business.
Do we need to talk about, I'm sorry, do we need to talk about the schedule for November, December tonight?
For what?
The schedule for November, December in terms of the potential change.
Could be lengthy, I don't know.
Well, I mean, this is the last meeting of October, so if we're going to make a change, we won't talk about it tonight. One of the things we talked about at the last meeting, Mayor, I don't think you were here, so in all fairness to you, we talked about possibly having the meeting in November, the third week of November, which would be the 15th. So that would give us then the option of looking at the last week, whether we need to have a meeting then or not. I don't know what the rest of the trustees think of, I'm just bringing this up now because we, we have to make that decision tonight.
If I may, we, we discussed this a while ago. It wasn't at the last meeting, because I believe our one meeting in Fall is right before Thanksgiving, and one right before Christmas. And in the past, we've done one meeting in November and one in December, unless needed. That's just what we've done the last few years. And again, as trustee Alston has said, it hasn't come back up, but we are moving in in November and December. So it's just something to consider that after Administrator Wallace speaks, to do one in November and one in December, unless absolutely needed.
One other point on that is, it is a five Wednesday month in November, so if we did choose to meet on the third Wednesday, which is the 15th, and we felt we needed to meet again in November, we could technically meet on the 29th.
Go ahead. I would like to make the board aware that the third Wednesday in November has a plating and zoning hearing schedule as well, so that wouldn't cause a conflict, just for information.
The other thought would be, the schedule's out there already of our first meeting, so if we kept it on that date, at that time, we could decide if we want a second meeting in November, if we want to consider that. in November, if we want to consider that. It's another way to deal. Leave our original meeting in November, first meeting on schedule, and discuss the second meeting possible or not at that meeting. I don't know what you think of that.
That's a good idea.
I would agree with that.
As of right now, David is okay with you, we leave it?
I'm just.
I know, I know. We're discussing it yet, so I'm discussing what you're pointing at. If I may, second?
The second Wednesday is pretty fast, so I don't know how much prep the staff has to do for that meeting. But I don't really care personally about being here both weeks much.
Well, I am hearing kind of consensus here that we'll leave the meeting as per the first week, by the second Wednesday of November, whatever that date is.
The 8th.
The 8th?
Well, the 4th, yeah. That makes the 4th the exhibit today.
Yeah, we'll do the day before Thanksgiving, the normal, the second. Okay. So we'll have our regular meeting, the second Wednesday in November, which is the 8th of November. Okay. Any other new business or old business?
Do we want to discuss December's as well, since we're, we want to keep it, the the third Wednesday in December would be the 20th, we moved that one.
What do you think? That's all I'll say right now. I have some thoughts, but go ahead. While we discuss that, there are November 8th.
I have a very specific, I think that legal does this.
I think the big thing in December is going to be the levy.
Stay ahead of the game a little bit.
The big thing in December is going to be the levy. Again, by the last Tuesday of December, we have to make a determination on that. So we want to look at, again, staff prep on that because there is some prep that has to be done with levy.
So maybe we'll leave, I'm not saying we're going to, leave the meeting as is. Even in December, we can decide what we need to do after that. Is that okay, Doug?
Yeah.
All right. Well, let's move on to, did we make it to new business?
I made it.
Okay, well, open to the public, non agenda, I just, please step up and away. Do you have anything you'd like to talk about?
My name is Ken Vasika, 5824 Roosevelt Street. The, the house that we're going to have rehabbed for $11,000, do we know what it's going to be worth when it's done approximately?
That's a demolition.
Oh, it's a demolition?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And on the roof, if this building is going to be a tear off?
It is, yes, sir.
Would be replaced as necessary and everything was included in?
Yes, it was.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else? At this time, I'd like to move into a motion, to move into executive session for purchase lease of real estate, section two, C5. Have a motion, Ed?
I like a motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call please.
Alston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move into executive session. If you're certainly welcome to sit around if you wish. Sorry, you know, maybe we ought to have a coffee pot for you.
I agree.
We will do that, since I opened up the, we'll get a coffee pot for you at our meeting from now on.